Somewhere is here. I do not know.
We have a minute before the board meeting starts. I'm going to ask Mr. Cruz Mata de bless our meeting.
Yes, sir. Dear Lord, thank you for this wonderful day, oh Father. Thank you for that we can gather here today, oh Lord. Lord, I ask that you just bestow your Holy Spirit upon us here, Lord, to help us make good decisions, oh Father, Lord. Whatever decision that is made, let it keep it friendly and then great, oh Father, Lord. Lord, also ask that you just bestow, you know, a hedge of protection to each and every one of us, oh Father, God, that is here today, oh Lord. Just guide us and help us, Lord, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. It's now six o'clock and we're going to call the meeting to order. I would like to recognize our guests today. Dan Tidwell, Dean Reimers, Wade Carpenter, Sandra Garza, Sarah Morales, Lisa Rosenberg, Zeke Martinez, Aubrey Haynes, Derek Sandoval, Victor Garcia Jr., Oxana Linan, Lisa Ermiss, Chuck Arabedian, Rhonda Shell, April Ruman, Connie Buchanan, Ryan Augent, Lori Compton Betty, James Bartinski, Judy Estrada, Cruz Mata, Armando Madre Don. Did I miss anybody? Please present yourself. That's recognized. We have an audience, two patrons. I understand we have a single individual, Lisa Rosenberg, who wishes to address the board.
Good afternoon. My name is Rosenberg Teresa. I'm here to submit my name for the UCAT nomination. I'm already serving at the appraisal district as a board of directors. I just want to go ahead and continue working there to the best of my ability and the ability of the board, like Mr. Moreno, and just want to ask for your support and hopefully you submit my name. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that request. Next on the agenda, we have to consider an act on the consent agenda, the August fifteenth nineteen twenty two twenty twenty four board meeting, financial statement at August thirty first two oh two four, and the quarterly investment report. Did I hear a motion?
A move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made, Secretary, to accept the consent agenda.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passed. For reports, we have a report from the Wildlife Management Group. Mr. Tidwell with Sir Reimers.
We've got some pamphlets and booklets that we also like to pass. I don't know you'll receive some information, but this is some more information about our program. And like I'll take a look at that. Obviously, there's quite a bit of information, but if you ever have any questions, please.
Right here in the middle.
Oh, right here.
Yeah.
So as we're waiting for the PowerPoint presentation to come, I want to lay also just say thank you to the board and to the audience for allowing us to come and talk about our program today. This is something that we're really passionate about. My name is Daniel Tidwell and this is Dean Reimers. But our coordinator is Bob Zane. Bob started the program almost twenty years ago, and I was a student once in this program. And so it's truly a privilege to be able to stand in front of you as part of this team and to also relay some of the philosophies that Bob has passed down to us. We don't view ourselves as teachers. We view ourselves as mentors first. We're here for the students, and it's the time even beyond the classroom that we value with our students because that seems to be the time in which we really reach our students to help them and really advance them in their education. We try to take common sense to a higher level, and we use that with wildlife management to be that vector to reach our students with those exciting outdoor activities. And so it's fun to see the excitement in students' faces as they come through every year, and we're doing it to try to make them better young men and women. But with our new business coming up, which we'll present on, something that's very exciting for us is Larry J. Milstad's Wildlife Endowment. So this summer, Miss Lee Milstad reached out to Lisa and very gracious, very humble, very easy to talk to lady that just recently lost her husband. And she Larry spent thirty-six years as a deputy game warden, was a lifetime rancher, cattleman, and understood what it meant to holistically manage wildlife. And so for her to approach us, to approach Southwest Texas College, is truly humbling that we may be able to represent him and lament his legacy going forward with all of our students. And so she has put forward two contributions of fifty thousand dollars for a total of a hundred thousand dollars in a scholarship endowment. And students starting this fall will be able to apply for twenty-five hundred dollar segments of that scholarship this fall and then also in the spring. And so for her to come to us, like I said, is truly humbling, and it is a privilege, and I feel like it's something that should be recognized as our as our as our new business and moving forward with with our program. And then briefly going over our our program enrollment, we do notice that in previous in recent years, in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, our enrollment is down a little, you know. And one of the things that we feel like we can focus on to remedy that is a podcast. And so one of the things that we've noticed, we survey our students coming in to our program, and over thirty-two percent of our freshmen notice our program by social media. It seems to be their leading. The second is going to be our former students and students that are actually in the program relaying their experiences to the fellow their fellow peers. And that is really the two major engines that are our recruitment. And so moving forward with a podcast and what's really going to be integral part of it, Gizmo is going to help us lead it and operate the the technical side of it. But we're looking at it as a multi-pronged opportunity to reach and expand our social media output for the Wildlife Management Program. We're looking at doing video social media posts, also doing what's called a videocast, basically a video version of a podcast that we can upload to YouTube and obviously listening podcasts, which would be Spotify or anywhere that you can get your podcast. But the whole goal of that would be is for our students to be able to show mom and dad, it's like, hey, look what I did in the field today, you know, and then show friends. It's like, hey, look, you know, y'all know our outdoor activities. We capture deer and we do prescribed burns and stuff that nature. And it gives them a chance to show that off and be proud of it and to, you know, show their loved ones, somebody to be proud of. And we can also use it as a learning tool to where we can give Dean and I can give them academic concepts of wildlife management. They have to digest those concepts and be able to relate that in a podcast. And so we hope that it can do multiple things, even educate some of our community landowners, but really build the camaraderie of the good things that we do in our program to a wider audience because that may be what the issue is in that program enrollment. I think we do really great things, but we can broaden our scope. And so we actually just recently this week submitted a application for the innovation grant for the for the podcast. And so that's something that's very exciting in our in our forefront. And then our demographics, we tend to always have a good, good amount of ladies. And so in gray on the graph, you can see close to fifty percent of our students are ladies. And it's pretty funny to get them out to the local landowners because they tend to outperform some of the boys. The willingness of the ladies is is really awesome to see and have them really want to be out there and be active and out compete. But I don't want to pass it over to them.
Well, moving on, I'd like to look a little bit where our students are from across the state. And when we look at from our areas out of district, we've got a little over half, about fifty-five percent of our students from out of district. And then we've got about forty-two percent in district students. And then we've got one student from Mexico that that represents our three percent. Looking at our graduates over the course of several years, as Daniel mentioned, our numbers are a little bit lower. But what what we've been able to see, though, is that we've been able to increase the number of graduates that we've had over the past couple of years, whether it would be a certificate or an associate's major. And what is unique with Daniel and I is we actually have the we actually have the capability to register our students. And so we're I'm pretty sure we're one of the few faculty in the college that have that ability. And so that allows us to track our students each semester and then work with them as far as if they need to retake a class or make sure if they have a deadline, what they say, what's whatever semester that might be, they want to wrap up, or we need to know that we might need to register them for a couple more hours so that way they can finish when they when they would like to. And so that has been a great benefit. And also, Daniel mentioned mentoring the students. And so that mentoring, developing that relationship has also been very helpful to get our students to to complete their certificate or their associates. We had eleven students this past spring receive their associates. Four of those students went on to receive their or going to get their bachelor's degree. They had one in Angelo State, Texas Tech, A&amp;M Kingsville, and A&amp;M Corpus. And the rest of those students went to and they went into the workforce. A huge component of our program is our student engagement. We do. We have a lot of activities outside the classrooms. And Daniel mentioned quite a few of them, our deer captures, our prescribed fires. We have a Bible study with our students off campus. We we actually have a collegiate planted plant identification team where we compete in in the fall and spring semesters with universities from across the state and a host of other things. So we're really busy in that. But that is that's why our students are there. They enjoy that aspect because that gives them a lot of a lot of opportunity to be involved and get green and gain a lot of experience. But there's two areas I like to to kind of highlight. One of those is Charles Poland, who's now at Texas Tech, entered the undergraduate competition with a poster at one of the state meetings this past fall and won first place. So really proud of of his efforts and the money. We actually received some money from an innovation grant as well to do some research, looking at scale quail and the the food that they were consuming. And so with that funding, we were able to to hire Charles and go through some of those crop contents and then also go to that meeting. And he did very well, very proud of him. Another really cool aspect that doesn't happen very often is we were able to go up to the Byler Ranch this past spring, and the Byler Ranch was recognized as a TPWD Lone Star Stewart Award for the Edwards Patel Eco Region. And so when ranchers receive that award, they send down their videographer. And so we were able to take some students with us and Daniel and I and Bob, we walked around and doing a little bit of plan ID on that ranch. And so the students got to see behind the scenes and how that all worked and also got to be involved, too. And so they got to see that video, and that was a really, really great opportunity for our students. One other great resource that we have in our program is David Reis or David Rios, excuse me, David Rios. He is Texas Parks Wildlife Biologist here. He's now a senior biologist, so he covers a lot of South Texas, but he's really involved in our program and a lot of our activities. But his he loves hunter's education and everything about it. And so we've got some great relationship with landowners, and one of our landowners opened their gates and allows us to take some students that might not have any hunting experience or maybe some just maybe marginal experience, and they want to gain more knowledge. And so we had a weekend or a couple of days this past year and took some students hunting, and it was a great, great time by everyone. We had some students that harvested some deer for the first time. And so when they have we have that opportunity, the students get to learn so many different things, obviously, cleaning the deer, skinning the deer, quartering the deer. So that way, in the future, they have an opportunity to know what to do down the road, get some knowledge on how to build a brush blind, areas to set up. So it is a lot of information over a couple of days, and the students really have a great time. So what we like to do here just shortly is we have two students with us. We like to and they're going to introduce themselves and give a little bit of information and why they came to the program and give their story because we believe that's very important. We have students that come from all over the state, and we've had some of them have asked come from Africa, from parts of the United States. And so they're going to go through and we've got some you can see of some of our pictures of activities that we have throughout the year. But we're going to have Travis and Victor talk a little bit about their story.
Hi, my name is Victor Gattuso Jr. I'm originally from Crystal City, very small town, not really a lot of information about these kind of programs out there. So you don't really get a lot of experience, basically get what was handed down to you. But ever since I was enrolled here, I had learned more in the first year than I'd ever imagined I have with these instructors, the way they mentor, and they actually want to teach you and watch you grow, not just watch as you go pass by. And the experiences here, I will never forget what you can actually take into the workforce and add on to your resume. I'm very grateful. Thank you.
I'm Travis Barninski. I'm from Tomball, Texas. I'm from East Texas. I actually already have a bachelor's degree in environmental science with a concentration in biology from Norwich University in Vermont. I graduated there in twenty twenty-two. I was trying to look for a job for over a year in the oilfield or in the wildlife sector or anywhere. Never got a job. I stumbled upon the program along social media, and I got to talk with Dean and Daniel and decided that I wanted to come do this program. I came to this program. I transferred my credits into which I asked them if I could do this program in a year, which they graciously said, yes, I could. So I came, did this for a year. I learned a lot through a lot of their hands-on training, like the deer captures, antler cuttings, the prescribed burns. I also got an internship with the Byler Ranch, and I worked there from basically October, when I started, up until the end of the school year. And at the end of the school year, they hired me for a full-time position there. So I'm the assistant to the ranch, the current ranch manager, which is Bubba Campbell. And I know Bill Byler very well, the owner and everything. I've been working on it since. And I just can't thank this school and this program really enough that they gave me these opportunities and this ability to immediately after I graduated, already have a job and already have a good foothold into a good place to grow and gain more knowledge.
That wraps up our our presentation. Is there any questions? We have time for questions.
We can see the videos we were talking about earlier.
The Byler Ranch. We can we can find that video and definitely send it to the board if you'd like to see it.
There's scholarships. There's twenty-five hundred dollars. How much are how many scholarships per year is that?
Right now, I believe it's going to be one scholarship, twenty-five hundred dollars. And the student needs to be an associate of applied science teacher.
Okay, we do have other scholarships.
Yeah, we do have other scholarships as well. So we do have a Locksaglin Scholarship, and that nearly has almost a hundred thousand dollars in this corpus. And then we have another scholarship that through the Safari Club International. It's an Alamo chapter in San Antonio. We've worked with them for several years, and we have students that apply, and they get that scholarship on a semester basis.
And do we have statistics on the completion rate per year?
I don't have it off the top of my head. I don't have it off the top, no. But that's something we can track down and talk to Ryan. I don't, when we were talking to Ryan, we didn't get that information. But I can provide it if necessary.
Dean, that would be your graduates and certificates?
It's a number of graduates, but we don't have the percentage of...
Percentage of how many start and how many finish? And how many transfer to, there's other universities, right? Like A&amp;M and Texas Tech and that have the four-year?
Of course, it's going to vary from year to year. So this past year, this past spring, we had four transfer. The prior year, if you look at those numbers, we had, I believe, about 20 students graduated with their associates. And we had probably about six transferred to Sol Ross. We had another four or five transfer in Kingsville. And so that's most, those are usually the colleges or universities that our students transfer to.
I was going to ask about where y'all did your onsite or in-field, whatever, prescribed burning and all. But you have a, I'm impressed with this list of ranches that are cooperating.
Yeah, so we've got, that's another great...
At Benny.
...of our program. If we didn't have access to those ranges, we wouldn't have the quality of program that we have. And so we have, we're able to access over 200,000 acres of property around the Uvalde area.
That's great.
Mr. Moreno, just rough calculations based on enrollment the last two years versus the completion. It's about 70%.
70%? Okay, good. Thank you all.
Thank you all for that wonderful report. And me?
Dr. Watkins.
We next have a strategic innovation and research report.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Gabza. And I'm honored to be before you tonight to briefly tell you a little bit about our department and introduce this pivotal team to the College of Success. The, our office is actually called Strategic Innovation and Research. As you see on the slide, we are also called the SER Team for short. And previous to this name, people knew this office as the Office for Institutional Effectiveness. So who are we? It's a small and mighty team. I jokingly call them the data wizards of the college. Small, but very much equipped with some very powerful tools that really help drive this college mission and goals. So I'd like to briefly ask them to stand and be recognized because they're with me here tonight. So our research analyst is Ryan Aldrich. Our reporting technician is Ms. Amanda Santos. And our assessment specialist is Ms. Sisandari Vinyah. Thank you so much for being here with me. I am their director. I am just completing my second month here. And I'm excited to lead such a powerful and talented team. So what is it that we do? We are committed to helping tell the district's story, the college's story. We focus on strategic innovation. We provide data. You heard the previous group reference, working with Ryan on a dashboard so that they have real-time data of how their students are doing, how their programs are doing. Especially now as we're entering into an era of accreditation. This team will be monumental in helping to collect that data and making sure that the college is reaching all the standards, whether they're those set forth by SAC COC, state, federal standards that we adhere to. Assessment and evaluation is another area. So you can see our team working with faculty members on assessing learning outcomes, working with individual departments on setting annual goals and helping to monitor that. And then data reporting. We deliver those reports. As I mentioned, just a couple that come to mind are reports required by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board and the Department of Education. So what is our role in College Success? I equate this to just monitoring the health as we do with our own personal health, right? So we want to make sure that everybody at the college is empowered to make informed decisions. So we want to make sure they have the data so that everybody here can help check the pulse, check the pulse of every program that we offer, every service that we offer to see how we're doing. We also foster collaboration. We partner with faculty, with staff, with administration to make sure that we have a laser focus on the college mission, ways of being, and the goals of the strategic plan. And we promote continuous improvement. So just like back to the health analogy, we want patients to continue to improve. And so physicians will rely on data. The college does the same. Rely on data, dashboards, and things of that nature to make sure that we can properly diagnose areas that need to be improved upon and address areas of growth. And then lastly, we really help to ensure transparency. We offer the tools and resources so that everybody has all the information, public record, to be able to look up our institution and know that it is grounded in integrity and reputation. So that's a brief presentation of what the SER Team does. On behalf of the team, we are excited about the acting as a vehicle as we move into this next era of growth, of expansion, and of course accreditation. Let us know how we can serve you.
Awesome.
Where are y'all physically located on campus?
We are located in the Wagner Building.
And just mind me asking, where were you before? You said you have been with us two months. Where were you before?
I most recently was at K-12. I spent eight years at UCIST. And my last role was Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum there and then in Del Rio for a week.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your information and helping us understand what you're doing.
Thanks, Sandy.
Next, we have the president's report.
Yes, sir. Item six in your board packet. Beginning with tech expansion, our warehouse project is about 95% complete, finishing out some electrical plumbing. And I think paving is scheduled to begin next week. Power line is working out of the side, so is truck driving. So and the warehouse, we just got to finish up some loose ends there. For the second Phase 1B, the modular from Palomar has been delivered, installed. General contractor is working on site work, trying to get the utilities connected, which that building will be the home for our truck driving program, our power line program, and our law enforcement academy. They're in Eagle Pass. Phase 1C, diesel and construction are both operational. We're still adding some electrical outlets in both areas to accommodate their equipment needs. They are teaching in those facilities. And then Phase 2A, which is the second year of that expansion, we're working with our architects to do some site work, layouts and designs for the addition of cosmetology and air conditioning in Eagle Pass at the Chittam Center and power lining welding for Del Rio. We're also looking at possibly additional programs for Uvalde, the aviation maintenance airframe, the power plug, graphic design, drone technology. So that's kind of what we have on Q as far as tech expansion. Rebranding continues. Every time you come to campus, you walk into a building, you'll see more signs come up. I know yesterday we got a shipment of table covers. So as it comes in, we're rolling it out. We're not completely done yet, but as we get it, we're pushing it out. A big component is going to happen over the Christmas break over our email address is going to officially change and then our domain name. So you'll go to swtx.edu versus the jc.edu. So that's going to happen over the Christmas break. And so that's ongoing. The team's working fast and furious to get that out there and put it up as soon as we can. Our fall enrollment, we were at 6,500 students, roughly half dual credit, half non-dual. A total of 56,608 semester credit hours. And that will grow as we enroll students in the second eight-week, which will begin in October. The important part there is that we hit our enrollment target for budget projections, which I know the team is very happy about. Just some other things that have come up since I prepared the president's report. We had our financial advisors that advise us on our bonds. Possibly at our October meeting, we'll have an agenda item for the board to consider refinancing some of the bonds that are outstanding. We have, we have a total of $17 million that are out there still outstanding. Our first, our oldest bond is a 2006 model. We have two in 2012. We have two in 2014, and we have one in 2016. And the interest rates vary from, we paid one off this year. So that's a good thing. From 3.3 to 4.48 is kind of the range in the interest rates. But I don't know if you remember, but last year, we had our, we have to submit all our financials to Standard &amp; Poor's. They do the bond rating. And for the longest time, we've had a triple B rating, a BBB. And with our improved financial position, they rated us to an A. So now we're graded as an A risk for bond purposes. And if you saw the news yesterday, we decreased interest rates 50 basis points, the Fed did. So the combination of those two puts us in a position where we can save some interest payments over the life of the bond. We wouldn't extend the time that they're due. Just refinance it at a lower rate. The last time they ran it, Lisa, about 200,000 in interest savings, more or less. So I expect that to be a little bit higher now with the rate drop. We'll get the official runs from the, David Gonzalez is our financial analyst. But just kind of give you a heads up. We're going to bring that to the board in October, the potential for some savings over the life of those bonds that are out there. Another thing that has come up is, well, you know dual credit and Sol Ross is doing some dual credit in Eagle Pass. VP Hoffman has been working with some preparatory schools in Piedras in Mexico that are interested in us offering them dual credit. It would be via Zoom, so they wouldn't leave their campus. So I'm asking the board if, right now, a lot of those students are US citizens but live in Mexico. The residency per our policy is, you know, it's based on where they live, not necessarily the nationality. So they would be paying non-resident tuition. So for example, a three-hour course would be $788 for a three-hour course. And out of district, which is what Eagle Pass community pays, is $542. It's a difference of $82 per credit hour. So what I'm asking is if the board would be okay that we discount it from the non-resident to the out-of-district rate. A Uvalde or in-district student pays 332, which is about $200 cheaper. And then a straight dual credit rate is 165. So their rate would be 542. And we might be able to pick up like 40 students, more or less, from those preparatory schools in Mexico. Sounds like a good idea.
Do you think that might generate?
About 40 right now.
Do you think that would expand as time goes by?
It could, yes.
They'll see the success of the ones ahead of them and they'll want to join.
And it also opens up the opportunity for them to continue once they graduate from their preparatory school to continue with our college, since they already have, you know, 15 credits with us. I think it would be a good replacement for those, some of those students that we lost to Sol Ross.
And what about on their side? Do we have to buy anything equipment-wise or anything like that?
We may need a smart board over there. But well, I mean, this was kind of the first step. And then we can look into smart board. There's alternatives to smart boards, but...
Would these students be starting now or would they start maybe in...
It would start in October in our second eight-week semester.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Would we have to staff someone over there or...?
No, it'd be Zoom. So via Zoom. So the students wouldn't leave their campus. Our faculty wouldn't leave our campus. It would just Zoom at a cost. It's really a no-cost for us, other than reducing the tuition a little bit. And we wouldn't reduce it below what Eagle Pass residents pay.
Sounds like a good idea.
Sounds like a good idea.
A motion to have, except there's just general feeling.
No, just, I think the board consensus on that. And I can, I just didn't want to go forward without informing the board.
That's like a very good idea. Thank you. Next, we have to consider an act on mission statement review.
Okay. Dr. Garza, you want to lead us in that? By the way, I want to say she's hit the ground running for being here two months and doing this level of work. You're doing an awesome job. So as a prelude, the slide's coming up. Two folds, you know? So you review the mission statement just to make sure that we're still grounded, it's still relevant, and we're still headed in the right direction. And then the other selfish piece of it is the board needs to review it on an annual basis for our accreditation.
This is it?
This is it.
We're reviewing now.
So our mission statement reads as follows. Southwest Texas Junior College enriches lives and advances growth through the education of our diverse communities.
No junior.
And so as we have reviewed it with cabinet, the recommendation, of course, was made to update the name of the college and remove the word junior. That is the only change to the mission statement.
And then the second page, just to kind of refresh the board, these are the beliefs and ways of being. Does it have a second? Okay, there you go.
And the beliefs and ways of being. We aspire to achieve excellence by purposefully committing to success, inspiring trust, transparency, professionalism, and accountability, engaging all with empathy and care. We embrace inclusivity by valuing every individual as unique and whole, fostering a culture of acceptance, respecting diversity of thought. And we champion opportunities for lifelong learning, professional, personal, and community growth and institutional innovation.
As a refresher, and I know we have new board members since we developed this, and I know we have some new members to our team here. This beliefs and ways of being came about right as we were coming off the COVID pandemic. So right when COVID hit, I don't want to say coming off the COVID pandemic, when we returned to campus from COVID. And there were so many things, so many great things that we did as an institution to manage the COVID pandemic and to not miss a beat with our students. We took, it happened during spring break. We took, it happened during spring break, we extended spring break by a week. And then by the end of that second week, we were up and running everything virtual, Zoom. And that's only one example. There's a multitude of decisions that were made by administrators, by staff, by everyone that kept us going on the right path. Right in the middle of that occurring, we were supposed to do our mid-plan strategic review. So we postponed it. And as we got to reflect back, before we even did the mid-plan review, we got together and said, you know what, we really need to look at our mission statement. And we really need to articulate our beliefs and ways of being. Because what we've learned about ourselves as an institution, that's what we need to communicate. So this here is a statement to share with the world of what, how we think, how we believe, how we react, how we respond as an institution. And that was really the whole pandemic and how we responded to it, brought it to light and said, you know what? This is who we are, and we need to articulate that. So that led to the mission statement and to this statement here was just us going back and saying, these are the things that we did, guided us, and how we responded. And how we were there for our students, how we were there for our faculty, how. So I just wanted to refresh our memory as to why we changed our mission statement and what. It's truly who we are as an institution. Every single one of those is very relevant to who Southwest Texas is. Yes, please.
I note that we approved the mission statement.
I see it.
So here's a second.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Change one word.
Motion passed. Next item on our agenda is to board trustees of evaluations.
Yes, sir. So this is item number eight in your board packet. And again, this is the board member's evaluation of the board of trustees as a whole. So you have there the different responses, there's different questions, the different responses. You have the average of each score. I don't think there's anything below four. And then there's some open-ended questions on the third page to review. And then you also have, the last two pages is a comparison to going back to 2017, 18-year to see how the trend is per each of the survey questions. And really, this is a time for y'all as a board to discuss, you know, any of those items and anything that you want to do different, that you want to improve on, you want to do less. Anything that we can help as administrative, do we need to schedule in some professional development, a board retreat? Really, this is whatever the board determines that would help them to be a better collective board of trustee. So this is y'all's time, you know, to discuss if you have, you want to talk about any specific item on here.
Is this something that, because since I'm New Year, is this something that is done every year?
Yes, and it's generally done, we generally do it in May after board officers and board elections, and then we do the self-evaluation. That's generally when we try to schedule it on the calendar, is during that time period in May.
It's an interesting exercise, because usually when people evaluate themselves, they rate themselves highly. It's a little bit, I don't know.
I, you know, so I'll tell you, the first thing that I did is to flip to the open-ended questions. Because I think that gives you a better reflection of where the board is.
Yeah, because when you, I mean, when you ask someone to do a grading, one through five, it's very hard to really gauge any actual data from that. Plus, it's hard because, you know, people generally are going to rate themselves well. So it's an interesting exercise.
I think the scores themselves reflect exactly how we all feel. I mean, all the scores are usually above four, and I think we have a great board. I think we all get along, we all have similar goals, ideas, and everything else. And then with administration's leadership, I think we're doing fine. And this is just a reflection of that, I think.
So looking at the open-ended questions, if I go to the number two, what are areas in which the board could improve? One of them is involvement. The second one says attend more CCAT conferences, workshops. And the third area finances, increasing better understanding of the budget in relation to the auditing process. Is there anything in specific there that we can do to help? You know, I will tell you, a great understanding of the finances will take you five years of working day in, day out. But that's not to say that we can, you know, provide you more information. We can schedule sit downs with Ms. Ermas and have some, you know, specific questions. Or we can, much like what we're doing with reports, we can, you know, focus on a certain area in the finances that you want more about. And we can, you know, give you little snippets, you know, every board meeting. Those kind of suggestions that we can do, that you feel that would enhance your knowledge, your role as a board member, we'd be glad. And we don't have to, you know, get to them today, but think about those things next meeting or in between. You know, shoot me an email, call me, you know, can we try doing something like this? Or I'd like more information, you know, some of it we can do collective. If you want to, you know, have an hour or two, you want to sit down with myself, Lisa, or any of the administrators or staff, we can certainly do that. The more informed you are, the better decisions that we make as a board.
Well, on that note, I just want to point out that a couple of months ago, I think I made an appointment with Ms. Ermas, and we looked at the financial report, she explained that, even though I've been here a long time, sometimes, you know, you don't understand or it's something I forgot, because I'm getting old, I guess. But she sat down, she took her time, and we went through everything. So it kind of highlighted everything that I had forgotten. It was a very good, thank you once again, Ms. Ermas.
Okay, and this doesn't need board action, it's just for y'all to review. We'll note it on minutes that y'all saw it.
Next on the agenda, we have a considered act on purchasing threshold policy, adoption.
Yes, we're asking the board to increase the threshold for purchases of goods. It is currently at 1,000, where we would need to get quotes. And we're asking the board to raise that to the state-approved $10,000. It will streamline purchasing a bit. There's no concern of the threshold increasing spending. Number one, departments have to operate within their budget. We also do encourage them to use the already-vetted consortiums that are vetted vendors by the state for the best value. Also, in the policy itself, and I'm going to read it. The purchasing department reserves the option to purchase from other than suggested vendors if there's an alternative choice for comparable services. So we're asking the board to increase the rate of 1,000 to the 10 threshold.
So in essence, what this means is if we want to buy something that costs $1,100, the current policy, as it reads, is we have to submit three quotes. The state for that policy is 10,000 is the limit. We've had it down, the state has changed it, but we've never followed that change. So now if a purchase is over 10,500, then that would require three quotes. Below that, it won't. Percentage-wise, how much of our purchasing is through a co-op?
Dana?
More or less?
Probably about 30%.
30% is through a co-op, and 70% is just three quotes.
So I understand, Dana, if it's less than $10,000, you can buy from whatever vendor you choose. Is there a policy that mandates that you look for the best price? I mean, is there a?
Well, that's best practice. The state's threshold is the 10,000. But we do, it is best practice, and it is in the purchasing policy to look for the best value. And we also encourage, as Dana has stated, to go through one of the consortiums, which is a vendor that's already vetted by the state for the best value.
I'm familiar with that.
So, and they also have to operate within their budget, so they can't just go crazy.
That incentivizes them to, yeah, cut costs, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the.
Did we, did we look at the other colleges to see what they're doing and what their thresholds are?
You know, I didn't, but most of them are with the state.
Oh, until they go to state.
But some of them are 5,000.
To me, if it's like, the way I look at it is like, if the state is purchasing stuff, they're going to be buying, we're a smaller institution, our budget is smaller compared to the state. They're going to be buying more expensive equipment, more expensive stuff. So that's maybe why there's just 10,000, where we're not going to be buying stuff like that.
Right.
And that's what I thought, though.
The state contracts, I mean, these pens are on state contract. So I mean, it literally covers a lot of, you know, small items. Yes, and there's multiple state contracts. And it's not so much that we're piggybacking what the state is purchasing. It's gotten, it's become so useful that the state goes out and they bid a lot of different stuff that they may not have to buy. But there's a lot of schools and a lot of colleges that rely on the state purchasing contract. So they go out and expand beyond what the state buys for their internal use. So I think those co-ops are pretty robust as far as items that are included. In fact, I think a lot of our diesel equipment and tools were purchased through purchasing co-ops. Because, you know, we found a contract that had those items on there.
This just makes it a little bit, eliminates some red tape, tries to.
Yes.
It streamlines things.
It streamlines it.
Well, I have a motion to approve the change.
One second. May a second to accept the change of the purchasing threshold policy? Y'all hear a vote in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passed. Next on the agenda is to consider an act on adapting the tax rate of 0.1155 per $100 valuation.
Yes, sir, that's item number 10, your board packet. Last Thursday at noon, we had a public hearing. We had nobody other than the newspaper show up, and they stayed silent. The hearing lasted a minute. And so that was a required hearing, so now the.
We need to do it again.
We just need to, last month, we proposed to adopt a rate, and now we need to adopt a rate.
There are a motion to adopt the.
I still move. I propose that the board of trustees vote to adopt a tax rate of 0.1155 per $100 property valuation. This will represent a decrease in the tax rate, but will provide the college with a greater amount of revenue than in the previous years.
One second. Motion's been made a second to accept the, adopt the tax rate of 0.1155 per $100 valuation. Y'all hear?
We need a record vote.
What?
A record vote.
I second.
A record vote.
I voted yes.
Yes.
Yes, aye.
Yes.
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 No.
Yeah. Yes. I made the motion.
Yes, so it's five to one, with one to draw. What do you propose that we do instead of adopting this rate? What do you propose to do?
Oh, I would have liked that no new revenue tax rate. That's what I was hoping that we didn't. But, you know, everybody else is going up. I mean, look at the city, look at the county, look at the.
Why are you voting against it? Why are you voting against adopting it?
Oh, because I would have liked the no new tax rate, would have been less.
It is less.
Well, it's less than what it was before. It's still not the bottom that we could have gotten, just to give our taxpayers a break.
I understand. I don't guess I need to.
I wish all the entities would have done that, but nobody did.
Next on the agenda, we have an act to, consider an act on Uvalde County appraisal district board nominations.
Yes, sir, that's item number 11. So there's two positions that are expiring terms, Vicente Goncalves III and Rosenberg Risa III. So we'll nominate this, this meeting. And then next meeting, the appraisal district will combine all the entities' nominations and provide that list back to us, and then we allocate the votes at that point. And if I.
Well, I would like to nominate Mr. Vicente Goncalves back on there and Mr. Rosenberg Risa back on there. Unless anybody else has any other nominations.
Don't we go with what he?
Any other nomination? Is somebody seconded?
No, not yet.
I'll second, tell him his own motion. Motion's been made as a seconded to nominate Vicente Goncalves and Rosenberg Risa to represent us on the taxing board as nominees. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the need to reconvene in closed session. The boards are being in closed session in person, open meetings. Techico, that codes 551.072, 551.074, 551.076 to consider related matters. ZU, SWTX.
Seven.
Yeah, yeah, I had my son's open house.
We were adjourned for a few minutes until we could be.
I
We're going to reconvene and open session to consider an act on the PICO lease for Del Rio Aviation Hangar.
Yes, sir. This is item number 14 in your board pack, and we recommend that the board approve the renewal of the lease with PICO Aviation for the Del Rio Hangar at a rate of 1,982.75 per month for a yearly cost of $23,793.
I move.
I second.
Motion's been made to second to accept the contract for a lease, PICO lease to Del Rio Aviation Hangar. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Consider it an act on a valid aviation lease.
Yes, sir. I would ask the board to table that. We don't have the lease document at this point yet.
Do you agree to table the motion? Anybody opposed?
No.
In addition, to consider an act on a revived cafe shop lease, you go pass?
Yes, sir. Item number 16. A current annual lease expired in August, and it has a provision for five one-year extensions. And we propose that we renew the extension, which has a 17% gross of sales as our commission for the lease.
I move that we accept it as presented.
Second.
Motion to second to accept the revived cafe shop lease.
Yes, sir. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Is there any further business?
No, sir.
Then we have a motion to adjourn?
May we adjourn?
Do we need a second?
Second.
And a second. All in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Get up and leave.